I don't know what you're looking at, so. Um, thank you. I, I know, you know, I have just a few line items here. I think it's probably one of the smallest budgets in the whole town. But the line item for salaries, no change there. That's dictated by human resources, so I don't do anything with that number. And then the commission secretary is also given to me by human resources. Program development, this is a line item that usually includes things like our economic development commission initiatives, score workshops if they choose to host those, or EDC breakfasts and award events. I have asked for a significant increase considering that the budget is so small. I am asking for a $10,000 increase to allow for the EDC to hire a consultant and economic development strategic plan. And then also a $500 increase for the tree lighting audio company. In the past, the shoreline chamber of commerce has sponsored that cost and they are reluctant to continue to do so. So I want to put that money in my budget to cover the cost if we don't find another sponsor or if the shoreline chamber, you know, like they're opting out at this moment, but we could maybe change their minds at some point. But we definitely need an audio component to that event, or it wouldn't work. So I just wanted to make sure we were covered there. Business development and that includes things like our REX dues, which I know we talk about every year. That is our, our regional economic development entity that works with the 26 towns in our region on economic development initiatives. I will tell you some good news that we have received from them this year. We were able to get a $40,000 grant from them for some brownfields assessments on our property at 78 Boston Street. So the payment that we make to them in dues is coming back to us in the, to the tune of $40,000 for, for that grant. Good job, Sherry. Preempting that one. But I, I have asked for a $2,500 increase on that line item to allow for things like trade shows and conferences like the IEDC, which is the International Economic Development Council. That's a pretty significant conference that happens once a year. In terms of trade shows, I did attend the ICSC, the International Council of Shopping Centers Trade Show last month, mostly to promote the Walmart space, the Shoreline Plaza Walmart space. But things like Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, we've been reading about them in the news recently. Things are not looking good for them nationally. Will they at some point close their property here? I don't know. You know, the scuttlebutt that I hear is that Michael's shore store shelves are often empty. And so things like that, we just need to be more mindful of and make sure that I have the connections I need with retailers, brokers to promote the town of Guilford and the properties that we have available. So that, that's an increase in that line item that I'm requesting. And then the last line item that I have in my budget is tourism. And an increase there as well, $1,200 to increase that line item because of our new tourism website. I showed it to the board of selectmen yesterday. That will have a hosting fee to update and keep it secure going forward, $1,200 a year. So I'll stop there and see if you have any questions for me.
On the assessment grant, the assessment of Boston Street, is that a grant to assess the conditions? Or will it possibly also include either recommendations or help with remediation?
Definitely the assessment recommendations. It was also offered in terms of cleanup. I'm not sure if that, if that funding would help with cleanup. But we asked for phase one and a phase two assessment, they gave us enough money for phase three. So that may be able to translate into some public cleanup.
Well, just having the direction will be important going forward. So that will know what we're faced with, whatever potential things.
Rex, Rex has been very, very helpful with, to us in this whole process with the, the brownfields remediation or assessment. No, no, I mean, in this, this particular project, 78 Boston Street. I'm not aware of any other projects that we've done remediation assessment on.
Okay, the only other question I have then is in, in the full time salaries, none of our partnership with Madison is reflected as a budget item for us. That's all Madison's budget.
Let, let me, let me address that if I can. I was gonna chime in anyways. So two things about the full-time salaries and I'll address the part-time salary. Full-time salary, we split with, with Madison.
This number?
This, no, this, this is our half.
This is our half.
But it's our half, first of all, minus an ARPA grant, which we're paying the same amount as we did last year. So there's $8,300 of ARPA that's offsetting part of Sherri's salary. The second part of that is that this, there's additional money for Sherri's salary that'll be in reserve for personnel since she does not have a contract that reflects an increase at this time. That's being, we're doing a ping, ping pong ball here between Madison and Guilford to get it taken care of.
But these numbers are ours and it's completely separate from Madison. Madison is the only thing.
Well, that's been my question, Sherri, the, all the requests you're making below the salary, that's all Guilford dollars. Am I correct?
That's my question as well. It sounded like some of them could be split with Madison.
Yes, some of them are split. So if I attend an event or go to a conference or a trade show, that is split with Madison, 50%. Things like advertisements in a chamber guide or the Greater New Haven Visitors Guide, that's usually in the tourism. That would be just us because it's an ad for Guilford, not for Madison. So.
Is Madison and Guilford not paying for that membership too?
The, there's two different memberships. Each one carries their own membership. Madison pays a REX dues and then they pay their Chamber of Commerce dues. We pay our REX dues and our Shoreline Chamber of Commerce dues, separate.
REX, we probably never considered.
I've had that conversation with, after, after we put this position together, I did talk to Jenny Kozlowski about that.
And let me also address, if I may, the part-time salaries. That's for the, the recording secretary for the Economic Development Commission. That, so just so you know, going forward, what I have done, and it's certainly your decision at the end, the current rate for the recording secretary is 1875 an hour. I've increased it across the board, not just for Sherri's commission, but for all the boards and commissions, to 1925 an hour, which is about a 2.67% increase over this current year. So it's sort of commensurate with the other, other salary increases. They don't have any contracts. It's something that we agree on or you agree on each year. So that's what's in this budget is 19 and a quarter for all the recording secretaries.
Yeah, are we sharing a secretary or does Madison have a secretary? We have a secretary.
Now, this is just for our.
That's just our, that's just our.
Two separate commissions.
Two separate commissions.
This is more for the Economic Development Commission.
Guilford.
Not a clerical position for the office. It's the secretary, board secretary.
Recording secretary.
Does Madison have the same?
We have a recording secretary in Madison, yes, separate, yeah.
So you don't have an assistant?
No, but if you'd like me to.
Step into that.
Option would be, does either secretary help you with that kind of stuff?
They do not.
Other than producing the minutes.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're strictly for the commission, which falls under her budget.
If you ask the commission to accept that's okay.
Yeah.
Also, there is, there is access to our, the selectmen's offices. Just one observation, the EDC strategic plan, I think it might be consistent with what we've done in the past and use of ARPA dollars for economic development activities. And at some point we'll have a, a refresh on the entire ARPA spending. But that may be an area where we consider using.
Along those lines, seeing as we have two specific retail potential issues on the horizon, the ones you've already named. Do you, are there any programs that you could communicate to either those landlords or developers? You know, to just be ahead of any potential issues or help when the issues arise, such as already at Walmart? You know, are there any grants, programs or whatever? I, I assume you're in communication with both of the developers. So my point is, I, I don't think this is a budget discussion or anything, but if there was something, would that be under business development? Is that what you're talking about or is this all specified with different memberships?
So if there were grant programs or other things that I would communicate, I would just do that. It's not listed in this budgetary item. But I think it's more about networking and making sure that you have connections with potential retailers that could come to town. And that is included with things like trade shows, going to see those types of businesses.
Outright investments in advertising. I mean, there must, there must be trade journals, different retail locations and that type of thing. I don't know.
And I don't know that municipality, they may do that. I would ask for assistance from REX. That's sort of one of the things that they do, as well as encourage the brokers to be advertising in those publications. It's really up to them, I think.
Okay, my only point would be sometimes it's easier to be ahead of something than.
Agreed.
Have the vacancy and start playing catch up.
Any other questions? I didn't mean to, John.
Sure, can I just ask you briefly, the, the brunt of the increase seems to be for the consultant for, I think you'd call it the ECD strategic plan. Can you just give it just a little bit on that? What does that kind of do for us?
Yeah, so.
What do we sort of get out of that?
Right, so I work with an economic development commission made up of volunteers from, you know, our residents, obviously. And oftentimes I find that there's no strategy behind their sort of activities or discussions. And so I think a strategic plan to really talk about what does the town want to see in terms of development would be helpful for them and for me. When going to look for a retailer for this Walmart space, I went to the trade show. There's a lot of different types of businesses out there that we could put into that space. But are they the right fit for Guilford? You know, do we want a, a huge arcade with bouncy houses and things like that in that space? Or do we want another retailer like a Walmart that offers the variety of products that Walmart has? I can tell you my opinion, but I think it's helpful to know the community's opinion before I go out there and, and find a great business for that space. And then everybody is upset because it's not the kind of business that they would like to see. So I think just some strategy behind what we do would be very helpful in guiding us as we move forward.
Is this something we've done before? Have we hired a?
I can't tell you that.
No, we've not. We've, we've done development on the back of a napkin for years.
As previous chair, I remember buying the first computer. What's about you?
I'm sorry, a bouncy house? Yeah, yeah, bouncy house.
He's like bounty house, that could be good.
Any other questions? Any other questions from our guests on the screen in front of us? Anything? No? Sure, thank you.
So Rebecca, our assessor is next.
Becky's on the line, wonderful.
Good morning.
Good morning. Becky, we will, you know, obviously you had very little hand in creating the, the budget that is before.
One, one, three, one, one, three.
One, one, three, largely put together by, by, probably by MJ, given the fact that you started in mid-December. These were due at the end of the month and we were well underway, so. And Becky, is there anything that you'd like to talk about specifically that you've included since you've, you've been here?
I did add a part-time appraiser. If that's approved, I found a need for assistance with assessing personal property and new construction. And that's where we gain value over the year when there's no revaluation. That's where all our, how we add to the grand list.
Okay. And that's 20,000, I think, revenue?
Yes.
See a bump in office supplies?
Yes. We found that it was less expensive to have quality data services, print the mailers, the personal property declarations, especially with the cost of postage rising, rather than to do it in-house and to spend staff time on it. The cost of stamps alone for the original mailer was exceeded. That number was way past what we had last year. And this adds actually another 300 mailers and it will all be done by quality data service. So it's actually going to be less expensive for us overall.
All right.
Motor vehicle pricing books did increase by 15% as well as pricing of vehicles went from 55 cents a vehicle to 77 cents a vehicle.
All right, but on the, on the office supplies themselves, are we, are, is there a corresponding line item somewhere else in the budget that's going to fall down as a result of us utilizing QDS for something that was being done somewhere else?
It's the, is the postage, the overall postage line for the selectmen?
That's the selectmen's office.
Right, so if she's talking about savings in postage, you'd see it in, in your line.
Oh, thank you very much.
Here to help.
We can make that adjustment.
Right, Karen, maybe not aware, right, right.
There's no way you can do any of that kind of stuff online.
No, I think it's statutorily required at this point.
Yes, we have to mail it, yes, the increases, yep. No email yet.
Well, it's only a matter of time before the legislature wakes up to the age we live in, which would also, also allow for electronic posting.
So just kind of, you know, it'd be a sign, sign in type.
Yes.
Yeah, so.
Any other questions for Becky at this point? So I, I do, Becky, the part-time appraiser. I think in the past we've done, we've hired somebody on a basis.
We have, there was, it was a smaller amount. It was just for new construction. But like I said, that's where we find all our value is through personal property, new construction additions. It would be helpful to get some more inspections and have some more field work as far as, you know, some of, some people have come in and their pools are incorrect. If you have a vinyl pool versus a gunite pool, it adds thousands of dollars in value. If we don't have that correct, you know, it's a good way to check it with that appraiser. Or if we miss something on a, if, if we have a personal property declaration that hasn't been filed, we can have the appraiser go out and check and verify what they have. We recently had somebody come in and I believe he's going to add with one storefront over $100,000 in value to the grand list. So it, you know, it's, it, that, that pays for him plus for that, for a day or two of work. I, I haven't gotten the total yet, but it could be $200,000 to $300,000.
Wow. That's, that's, that's great thinking. I like, I like the thinking. How many?
It pays for itself and, and adds to the grand list.
Right, and how many appraisals do you think we can do under $20,000?
He, this specific person charges 40 to $45 a parcel. So quite a few, if you're doing new construction, you know, it depends on who you hire and how they, they charge for that. I'm not sure what the, the prior appraiser who did the new construction, how many he got in. But if you have, you have so many of, of these buildings that are being constructed and you know, additions, measuring additions, making sure we get all of that value added to the grand list. Cause that's what gives us more money for the budget.
Can any of that additional cost be charged back to the developers to many projects? I mean, I know we charge for buyers, inspectors for the construction part.
Good question. Look at that.
It might not affect this budget, but in a certain, you know, we started talking, adding people for that specific purpose and. Changes going on in that department? I see the changes under education and training. Are, are you comfortable with this number going forward? Are there any specifics that have to go on in that department with the changes in personnel?
Um, I, I added membership dues to the, obviously dues section to hopefully have, I don't think we'll need all that in the budget, but that pays for some of the seminars. And when you have that membership, it cuts the price in half of the courses. So that may facilitate, you know, taking some money away from all of those expensive seminars. We can do virtual training or week-long training for I double A O. With the membership, that'll be cheaper. So it, it probably will not be at that value. But look, you know, I don't, I'm not sure what the past seminars that were attended by the assessor, so.
Frankly, I was probably going the other direction. Is this number adequate, especially under education training?
Um, I think so.
Okay, all right. Your department.
You can add more if you want.
Any, anybody have any other questions? Or, John, there you go.
Rebecca, I was just curious, if I'm reading this right, it's in a new format to me, but it looked like your full-time salaries went down. Is that?
Yes.
Am I reading that right?
Because we're paying Rebecca Lester, we're paying Jennifer Bernardo, who retired.
Oh, I see, cause it was a change. Okay, and then I think I might have missed something. You, you're thinking about hiring a new appraiser, but you said that that would, would actually make us some money? And I'm sorry, how does, how does that work?
When they discover, list and value the property. If we have a business, a new business that opens and they can go into the business and value that property and add it to the total of the grand list, so then we get more in revenue.
Oh, I see.
The more we add to the list, the more revenue that we get.
Okay, now I understand, I'm sorry. They just want to buy me, that makes sense.
Consider a line on the property owner to tell us what the property value is.
Oh, which I'm sure they're.
Right, right, right.
This person would go in and actually inventory it.
Okay, I'd like to pay horses.
I just, okay, I just don't understand that. Thank you very much.
Another point on the salaries is also the, the full-time, full-time position in that department, the person retired. So when you.
That's correct.
There'll be some studies there too.
There are, thank, thank, Sandy, that's, that's actually a bigger part of it. The, the change, it was this year with Becky coming on from Jen. And then also we have, as, as Sandy just mentioned, a long time assessor's clerk has retired. So we're looking for hiring somebody at lesser and going forward that too. That's, that's also a, a big part of that, that decrease that, that resolves in a very small decrease overall. One other thing just to mention, Becky has the, the fieldwork person under, under part-time salaries currently. That may change into a, into a contractor, contracted services instead. Because right now we've got the person working as an independent contractor. We may continue to do that. Gets approval, we'll, we'll assess that.
Any other questions?
I'll be right there.
Hearing none, Becky, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Board of Assessment Appeals. Barb is on the call, one, one, four, the next budget.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Barb.
So my budget actually is only going up by $75. The stipend line is going to remain the same. We have six board members at this point, which will, depending on how many appeals we get, will probably need every one of them. The clerk to the board is under salary, regular salary under the assessor's office. The education budget, I'm keeping the same because most of them have already gone through the training. The two new folks, when there's an opportunity for a workshop, I'd like to have them go. The office supply, I have increased slightly due to increases in cost of goods. And the same with a legal notice line, I increased that slightly because publishing fees are going up as well.
Thanks, Barb, pretty simple. Anybody have any questions?
Are these announcements?
20 mil for her niece on?
No, that's what you posted.
Yeah.
Legislature's not willing to take a fight. All right, Barb, thank you very much.
You're welcome, have a good day.
Next up, we have Human Services. Tam is here, number 142.
All right. All right, so for the Human Services Council. This year, we received 19 applications for funding. The total requested was $151,041. And we are recommending $115,191, which is a 5.98% increase over last year. To be eligible for funding, each applicant must be a 501(c)(3) nonprofit and must serve Guilford residents. Each organization must complete an application. This is an example of our application. It's available on the Human Services Council page of the town website beginning in August. Along with the application, they have to submit their most recent financial statement, a Form 990, and a list of their board of directors. Each organization is then invited to give a presentation to the Human Services Council. These meetings are held in October. At that point, we have the opportunity to ask specific questions about their applications. And we always ask about their sources of funding and about their fundraising efforts. One issue that was pervasive this year, as it was last year, is the hiring and retention of employees. Although we've been assured that it is getting better compared to the prior year. After listening to all the presentations, we write a summary of each organization with a funding recommendation. That's this document, which I submitted online with our numbers. These summaries state how many Guilford residents are served and how the money requested will be purposed specifically only for Guilford residents. And of the 19 applications this year, there were three new ones. The Community Nursery School, Neighbor Works, and the COE, which technically isn't new, but they last applied in 2012. Also, last year, there was a question. I was asked if these organizations help their clients with their needs for other types of services? And the answer to that is yes. So I'll give you a couple of examples. The Community Dining Room will suggest that their clients apply for other services such as SNAP. BH Care also encourages their clients to apply for Husky. So I hope that answered that question last year. So I'm open to any specific questions you have about any of these organizations or how we evaluate them.
I thought the question last year was, do these organizations, do they apply? Does the organization apply for funds for?
That's one thing we ask them, yes. Where do the, what are their sources of funding? Yeah, for sure.
Do you know if, and I don't know exactly whether our funds are.
Well, this, this is an interesting, that conversation with the $500,000 we just allocated to the Guilford Foundation for Guilford nonprofits. I think it's going to create some significant opportunities for some of these organizations. And in my mind's eye, the ability for us to, to fund certain endowments through the American Rescue Plan was expressly prohibited because you have to spend them on by a certain time. But we've got a legal opinion that says, well, if they, in the application for the ARPA funds, they say, what are you going to use this for? Well, we're going to use it for salaries, we're going to use it for electricity, we're going to use it for heat, et cetera, over the next couple of years, right? Well, the logical question is, well, what are you going to do with the money you used to get to do that? Are you going to put that in, are you going to put that in some kind of endowment, reserve? Yeah, but I think this is going, this is, this is exactly why we did what we did with the American Rescue Plan Fund. It's just that these organizations, something extra beyond what they normally have to run their operations. And a lot of it to make up, particularly to make up for the impact of COVID.
That's because they can't apply directly to get out of the attempt.
Exactly. Well, nonprofits can, there is, there's some state money available, some state, state money that they can apply for as well.
Questions too, Paul. I'm assuming in your application process and in, in your work, you coordinated with the foundation, Guilford Foundation. I'm assuming in your application process, in, in, in your work, you coordinated with the foundation, Gilford Foundation?
No, not yet, because these applications were due in October. Or actually in September. I don't know how we, that's not part, well, I mean, that, that's a brand new topic for us. Will we coordinate with them? I mean, when are the applications for those funds due?
Underway as we speak, developing the application.
Okay, so I think going forward, it's worth some conversation and, and part of, of what you're already doing about where other potential funding is going. So, you know, that's a work in progress, and I think it's something that.
That is definitely something that we would incorporate into our application next, next year. And that's what we did actually with the COVID relief funds for the past couple of years. The first year, we could have, didn't, didn't ask that question, but then the subsequent two years, that was part of the application. Did you receive COVID nineteen relief funds? If yes, how did you lose them? And were you required to pay it back? So, we will incorporate that next time.
And also, if you could incorporate, Matt mentioned that there were some ARPA funds that they could apply for directly. Maybe you could let them know.
I may have misspoke. There were COVID relief funds, not ARPA funds.
That would be part of our application, that would be incorporated into the questionnaire, application for next year, for sure.
The increase is basically new.
Well, there's one large, DNA Community Healthcare is out. Is that because of the merger with Gail?
That was one of my questions, I mean, you said you had nineteen agencies apply. Did you recommend funds for all of them?
Yes. Unlike last year, where we did not recommend funds for all.
Okay, and then you said the new ones were Community Nursery School, Neighbor Works, and COE, but then what is UR Community?
UR Community Cares is, this is the second year they applied, but that is, we did not recommend funding for them last year. So, they're not a new applicant, they're a second time applicant, but this is the first time we've recommended funding. UR Community Cares is a new-to-Gilford organization, really spearheaded by Tammy Di Francesco and Social Services. UR Community Cares is statewide organization. What it is, is it's a digital platform that any town can use. It's a way to connect people that need services. It's mostly geared towards senior citizens or folks who are disabled, who need somebody to do their grocery shopping, drive them to CVS, mow their lawn, do some yard cleanup, pairs them with volunteers who want to help out. And there's no cost to register for, excuse me, the recipients, no cost for the, to register for the volunteers. The cost is in the FBI background checks, the FBI background checks. So, UR Community Cares does the background checks on both sides for the volunteers and for the recipients of the services. That's what their request was for. They have, this past year, the numbers are in here. How many folks from Guilford are registered, and for each person who signs up, they do the background check and that costs money. That's the basis of their request.
Isn't that why I, I volunteered different things than that to have FBI checks.
Not with this organization. The, the organization does, UR Community Cares does the background checks. It's free for everybody else to sign up, though. That's why, I mean, that's why they're encouraging folks to sign up. And the background checks cost.
I question why I'd have multiple, multiple volunteers, you get tracks.
Actually, they do check once and then there's a recheck too. That's the cost.
Other questions?
Yeah, are you, what, what are you seeing that's different this year?
What are we seeing that's different more often this year? And I have to say that during the presentations, the past two years, we felt that there was a lot of struggling in the nonprofits. This year, there's still some residual struggling, but definitely some optimism. And that comes with the organizations being able to hold their fundraising events again. A lot of them had to forego their big events for the past couple of years. This past year, they were able to do it. And so, that's really, I think, why they were able to hold on to, hold on to their staff because they could, you know, have more income. That was really the one thing that stood out was the ability to hold on large-scale fundraising events again. Also, though, a lot of them also mentioned that they had to become creative with fundraising, which was not something they really, you know, every year they relied upon the same event, or, you know, some kind of gala, some kind of dinner. They had to be creative over the past couple of years, which was great, but often didn't, the result, the end result was not as much income as they had hoped, as not as much. The payoff wasn't as great, so I think a lot of them are very glad to get back to their, their traditional fundraising. But with the idea that they have these other alternatives, you know, that they can fall back on if they need to. That was the upside this year.
Any other questions? Any of our friends online? Thank you. Pam, thank you very much.
Up next is Parks and Recreation, number one four four. Looks like we have the team, the dream team here with us today. There's room for all of you, come on up.
My request's a nightmare. I, I guess I'll start off here. Right, first of all, I just wanted to thank the, we were selecting finance, the partnership recognition, but it's that you folks have given us over the years. Allows us to do the things we can do, and I think, you know, we have pretty good respect in the community. We wouldn't have it if we didn't, weren't able to do the things that we do. Between staff and facilities and programs. Just want to highlight a couple of things of this year, and I know we're more interested in next year, but just to point out that things like our concerts on the green were very well received this past year. We bounced back from COVID with things we've been, been able to do. The concerts at Beach were all well-received, you know, big crowds. We installed energy-efficient lighting in Guilford and Whitfield rooms last year, and this past year. And also the Kwanzaa room and the Nookin's room. If you've ever been up there, one of the finance meetings, it was dark up there. The lighting was not good, so we have all brand-new lighting up there now. It's much better. We also, the, the, the LED light poles are going in as we speak at Adam's basketball court. That was a part of the project. They'll be finished next Monday. And then the splash pad, we all know, we got an amazing donation, contribution from an anonymous donor that allowed us to put that splash pad in. The same donor gave us fourteen thousand dollars toward the disco off course, so we're able to expand the disco off course to a more pro-level course. And we got the Coast Guard Academy put in for free all the T-pads on the longer course, so there was no cost to the town for any of that, or the splash pad. The water we're paying for, but beginning to splash pad in was, you know, was a generous donation, as well as the money that the committee had raised for that. So, we're, we're blessed, we're blessed with what people have done for us in this community, allows us to do the things that we are able to do. Highlights, really, only a couple of things I really want to highlight for this year that are really dominating or driving the budget. There's minimal or no increase in eight of our accounts, trying to keep the, the levels even or a very minimal increase. Utilities, of course, I'm sure you're hearing it from everybody, our rep, we used a number that was pretty much recommended by Mary Jane of thirty-five percent increase for electricity. Thanks, Scott. And we put, I forgot my budget.
It's a budget meeting.
Maybe I won't eat it. But, so utilities, of course, are going up. Anything to do with our parks, the, the community center, parks, fields, most of the increase would have to do with just the cost of products have gone up. Fertilizers going up a lot, we're trying to do more organic fertilizers, because that's more sustainable in that whole realm, and they cost more. So, and those increases are because of that. On grounds, parks, we are renting that office trailer for a full year. We originally talked maybe by half year, but we're going full year with that, so that, that raised that a bit. The only else really, in parks and grounds, we, we want to purchase more of the covered trash, not the, not the big valley that we're putting on the green, because once we use into parks, a lot of uncovered, the birds get in there and, you know, they, they make a mess, so. I think the minimum order is like twenty-four, twenty-five, which we could use all of that many anyway. So, that, we have that, so three thousand dollars, we have that in the grounds maintenance account, you know, for buying some more of those. So, that would also add to that increase. But then senior meals, this is the big one. We've been monitoring, Terry has been monitoring our meal increases, and we look back from two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-three. The increase in the total number of meals went from thirty-three thousand five eighty-six to this year, we're anticipating over forty-five thousand. It's about a thirty-four percent increase over the last four or five years. With no increase in staff, and this is part of the reason I have Larry here to help justify what, what we're proposing. We would like to take one of the, we're not looking for more staff, we want to take one of the part-time staff, make that full-time position. That gives Larry, that increases that position from twenty-four to forty hours, so gives him sixteen hours of help. More bodies, we really don't have a lot of room in there for more bodies, but more, more help. And Larry, weigh in when you want here, but part of that would be coming in early, like he does at six in the morning for prep. He's by himself, prepping all that stuff. And I should step back and tell you that about eighty percent of the meals we do is Meals on Wheels. The other twenty percent are folks who come to the community center. So, there's a lot of prep for that, that's all gonna get packaged and sealed, and I know Christie Burton from Meals on Wheels helps with that too. But it's a preparation, and Larry's there early, no one else is there when he is. But you want to add a little bit to that, you know, justification, adding some hours there.
No, we just need more, because of the increase that we've had. Rick indicated, it's just really, it's just put a lot of stress on us all in there as far as getting meals, it's a lot of, certainly is a lot of extra time, my time. Certainly giving up a lot of extra time for that myself. You know, part-time is just what it is, part-time, and only there for a certain amount of hours, we stretch that out sometimes. You know, and it's not just the meals, it's the cleaning and everything else that goes along with it. So, just it, as Rick just said, with the increase on it, you need more people, you need somebody there with a few more hours, that's all. I need somebody that had a forty-hour week, because this way, after, after all said and done, the meals are out in the afternoon, or the at twelve o'clock, one o'clock, one thirty, when the seniors are, leave there, there's still, you know, still dishes to be washed. There's still other things to do. Also, there's the night thing, some of the night programs that Terry has put on, like anything from the ends to the dinner, to whatever, there's several, there's so many things. And, and this person, a lot of those, I'm the one that's taking care of them, because these people already have all their hours, and they can't put anymore. This, this person, their hours would be somewhat flexible, so that if we need, if Terry has a function in the evening, this person can also come in at nine o'clock at night, some days, then we can stay out till we got the worst of those to help me, so.
So, you're increasing it by sixteen hours going?
Yeah, we just placed the sixteen.
The net budget, so we're reducing the part-time account by almost twenty thousand dollars. Taking out of part-time, putting it full-time, but, but it adds about, it's about twenty thousand dollar increase. The number that Mitch came up with around forty, I think, I think that's right.
That's your full-time salaries when we're talking about, that's senior meal associate, isn't that more food?
Two separate things we're talking. Not talking the subsidy, they're talking salaries at this point.
Right, subsidy, that's my next one.
Okay, because it started with the senior thing, and I can appreciate why, senior thing, but that's in the salary line.
Right, right, so senior meals is a big, it's a, it's a big request, because it, but it affects two areas, the salary and then the subsidy, so I'll go, go ahead now if you want.
Just, you have a part-time person now who's twenty-four.
Three part-time people, yes.
And there's a person in the existing position that you think would be a candidate for this? So, you wouldn't have to bring in somebody and train them?
Be one up, basically, but again, not, no more new bodies, just. Yeah, because we can't, again, it'll get crowded, we put another part-time body in there anyway. But like, you know, Larry said, it would just help him, takes a little, I think we all know Larry's a superstar. I mean, I think it helps him a little bit, having somebody there, more hours to help them do what he's doing.
I think the flexibility is the key.
The flexibility, we, we, well, we'd often maybe add that into the job description this year. But yeah, typically that would be, what would we say, six to two, I think, or something, but like Larry said, some days, if there's a big lunch, maybe that day it's nine to three, or go home for a little while, come back at five o'clock to help with the, the dinner, you know, for the pizza and the movie, or whatever, the vegetarian puts on there. Today, it was a good example, Rotary had lunch there today, and two of Larry's staff didn't show up. Two, two were, were sick, and he had to put on the lunch for Rotary today. And so, he fortunately was able to get a volunteer to help out in the kitchen, but kind of last minute. But that's what he's working with. The, the, the subsidy, so we, we figured out, Terry does report every month and, and confirms it with the finance office. We're on target to be somewhere around forty-six thousand meals this year, at least forty-five thousand. And we've, we, we figured we are losing about two dollars a meal. So, if you, you know, simple math, that's ninety thousand dollars that we're gonna lose this year. So, rather than, we're not coming to ask for ninety thousand dollars, but we thought, well, let's, let's see if we can get forty-five thousand up from the twenty-seven we're getting right now for the subsidy. We raised the price fifty cents in October, we'll raise it again fifty cents in July, so there's a dollar. So, that's half of our loss, right, so if we're losing, we, we, we're thinking we'll gain forty-five thousand, so we're gaining half of it. And so, then we're asking, can we get the other half subsidy through the, through the town, so we don't have to go too far, too high up other seniors? Along with that, I just mentioned Rotary, Rotary is now starting to come every week to the community center for lunch or breakfast, and we're pricing it, not saying we're trying to make money off it, but we're.
Let's put it this way, you're not subsidizing Rotary.
We're not subsidizing Rotary, and, you know, rough estimate is, over the course of the, of the year, maybe just five, six thousand dollars that we get from Rotary, that's gonna help us. So, we're, we're, we're trying to show you, they're do, we're doing, we're trying to do things on our end of it to help reduce that subsidy, and help get to what we need to, you know, for the, the meals. We're also going up on breakfast, I think we went up a little bit already on some of the things. But we're looking at, you know, the breakfast used to help pay a lot for the lunches. We used to take in eighteen to twenty thousand dollars on breakfast, which anybody can come and have breakfast. Sometimes when parents are there with the kids in gymnastics, they get a bagel or, you know, toast or waffle or something. They, they pay for themselves and then some, they, they, there's some revenue that comes in from breakfast. We're trying to increase that some. I think since COVID, though, we really haven't got back there, we're getting eighteen to twenty thousand. We're maybe thirteen, fourteen now, Terry. We haven't got back up to that yet, but we're kind of letting people know that, hey, you know, we're here, anybody can come for the breakfast. So, in fact, just the other day, I saw a few new people, one guy came from Clinton, never even knew he had breakfast. Said, yeah, come on, you can, remember, it was, actually, it was a veteran, said, I'll talk to you a little bit. So, I think we're seeing those numbers a little bit going up, Thursdays is always a pretty big group, right? There's about twenty, thirty guys come in on Thursday for breakfast. So, it's creeping up a little bit, but the point I'm making is that eighteen or twenty thousand used to help also subsidize lunch, we're not back up there yet. We're working on that, and, and if we increase the practice cost a little bit more, it's, it's, we're doing everything we can to try to help. So, we're not, you know, going way up on the seniors, but we can't go, we can't raise any thousand dollars.
Rick, just a question, Meals on Wheels, they, do the residents get charged for those meals, or is that all pro bono?
No, they're, they're on a sliding scale.
Based on income.
Yeah, just the, the reason I bring it, you know, we, we just went through the Human Services, and, you know, we're subsidizing Meals on Wheels from that side as well. Uh, about fourteen, thirteen, fourteen thousand, I think.
I just wanted to add that we've been balancing the park and rec budget by using ARPA money to cover a significant portion of their lost revenue, uh, for, for the meals. So for, for two years, we do that.
Can you bring up another revenue question? I mean, go ahead, can you?
Okay.
I know in the past that sometimes you have the program budget and it was high at one point and then COVID really knocked it down or you needed to use it. So where are we with that? Where are you with, is it on, if it's on here, I can look at it.
I don't think it's in here, it's not part of the budget.
That's right, this is separate.
It's healthy, I mean, we use that for all the concerts, the fireworks, you know, we used to get money for fireworks from the, we paid for the.
I'm assuming we lost connection.
I, I don't hear anything. And I just walked out.
Yeah, I did too. Yeah, I did too.
I'm having issues on my end, I've been connecting, disconnecting personally. While, while meeting, so want to make sure it was them, not me this time.
That was probably you, Mike.
All right, well, I'll, 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 I'll buy that.
It's like spring out there.
Tracy, did we lose video and audio?
Yeah, the, in the conference room, they're, they're, it looks like they're back up now. Matt, just so you know, you're on mute.
I'm not going to repeat that. Other than, other than we look forward to seeing what those numbers are. Other questions or areas, Joe?
I guess I got a few questions, um, you know, I got, I got concerns because some of the increases are pretty big, like over time, I just back of the envelope calculation, twenty percent fuel, thirty percent up. Looked like utilities might be around eighteen percent up. Obviously you're talking about the, uh, senior meals program, which was like it's up sixty six percent. Uh, and even vehicle maintenance is a pretty substantial, maybe twelve percent up there as well. So I know you got your, your hands full. Um, I do like what I'm hearing, where you're trying to say, hey, we're trying to be a cost center that can profit here. And that, that can offset the costs when we're helping people like a valuable program, like the senior meals program and everything. But, uh, you know, definitely some concerns about some things that are going up. So just to kind of give you a break, I, I wonder if maybe our director can tell us a little bit more about maybe utilities across the board. Sort of fuel across the board.
You're going to see that.
It's going to probably happen again when it's.
Uh, so you know, we, we did go out to bid for, uh, all of our fuels, uh, came in, although they came in less than we anticipated them to come in, there was a significant increase. Um, so you will see that in all the budgets, and it'll be a common theme, uh, through the budget, same thing with utility costs. Estimates ranged from twenty to sixty percent increase, um, in electricity alone. We, um, chose to go with a thirty five percent increase, um, so that we at least would come, come within that margin somewhere. Uh, so you're going to see that, or use, the, the numbers you gave, you're probably going to see that in all, if not most of, of the departments that will sit in forward.
Okay, and then I guess I got a question for a break. Um, a lot of people tell me they love community center, they love the services, and they consider them to be a bargain. Is it maybe possible for us to say, you know, it's been so much of a bargain that we are going to have to bump it up a little, some, you know, some fees, but it'll still be a bargain, you know, is that, is there some flexibility there to do that?
Well, there may, but the, but that account doesn't affect the budget.
Right, that's the program account.
But, but I can tell you something, John, about the fuel, how I came up with that. I, I looked, I, I contacted Public Works and asked them to give me a printout of how many gallons we use, like total. So they told me we had six thousand, four hundred and sixty four gallons of diesel, uh, seven thousand, two hundred and sixty six gallons of gas. And I just multiplied that out by the, the, what our new numbers are, uh, which is three oh nine for, uh, for diesel per gallon, two seventy. I wish I could buy our gas here, it's great, two seventy for, uh, gas. I multiplied it out and it came out to, um, uh, about thirty nine thousand. But then we get a bus grant, what, forty five thousand dollar grant for bus? That gets applied to a lot of different places, I took about two thousand dollars from the bus grant to put it toward gas. But that's why we came up to thirty seven thousand, based on our actual usage this year and what the, what the prices are going to be. I just grabbed a number out of the air, which is what were our actual gallons. Uh, the bus grant goes toward, um, uh, full-time salaries, uh, bus driver salary, uh, wages, um, and vehicle maintenance, I think about twelve, thirteen thousand put toward vehicle maintenance. We, we can break it down pretty much any way we want. And that's how, you know, that's how we do it, we take that forty five thousand and we apply it to certain parts of the budget.
Yep, so with your specific situation, about your department and your grant, it's, it gave you about a thirty percent increase in fuel. So we're going to see similar numbers in other departments.
And I believe, um, and Charlie can correct me if I'm wrong, all the departments are given their, their gallons so that they can determine what their, uh, need will be for the new year. So that information is provided for all the departments.
All right, thank you.
What about natural gas? Kind of percentage increase that we're looking at there?
They, they didn't have an increase, there was nothing, them or the water company. Not to say that that can't happen, um, but when I spoke.
Because I know we converted to furnaces.
Correct, yeah, so we contact, we contact all of those, uh, utilities and I, we pass that information along to the departments. Um, like I said, those things can change at, you know, at any time, but we go with the, the information that we have at the time.
Rick, I know that you're, you're working hard, you know, on the dollars and that, and that type of thing, especially on the meals. And, and I can appreciate that we're subsidizing them and I, I do think we should. Is there opportunities for the people, you know, for instance, breakfast and lunch, or even the bus rides when they go out of town, is there an opportunity for the people that are using them to donate? You know, do, you, do they have the understanding that these things are subsidized and if they wanted to donate uh, a little bit extra, whether it be during the season or even, you know, especially I am thinking of some of the longer bus rides and things like that. You know, some people might have the ability to, to help out if they understood just how much the town is subsidizing these things.
Well, first let me just address the meals, I'm actually going to the Rotary board, um, uh, in February, and I've already kind of put a bug in your ass if they would be considering considering donating three thousand dollars toward our meals for this year. So I'm going to talk to the board about that, um, and then.
An organization like that, that might even be an opportunity for a fundraiser.
Yeah, um, and Dawn, uh, has indicated that, that there may be one or two Wednesdays a month where they're not actually getting a meal to community center, they might get it from Naples or something, because Larry may not be able to do it every Wednesday. You know, he just may not be able to do it. So she said that on those days, they would give us a donation toward the room, which we, you know, could put it to our meals, you know, so that could be another little bit of income there. Uh, bus rides, we, uh, we charge for trips, obviously.
I don't mean by charging, just, just so people that are using it, you know, I'm thinking people for breakfast, I mean, to Jonathan's point, it, uh, it's considered a deal. And, uh, you know, maybe if some of the people that are utilizing that deal could appreciate that, you know. I don't want to say a tip jar, because it's, you know, that would be a whole different connotation, but, uh, just so that people that are availing themselves to these things, you know, have the opportunity to, uh, help out.
Well, so you get some donations for that, but not specifically for bus rides, but sometimes people give you a donation.
Even just the meals, sometimes people will, you know, say, actually, the good thing about going up fifty cents is we'll get back into the fifty cent range. A lot of times if they keep the fifty cents, they don't want to change. So, um, that'll happen, or, you know, the, the event is eighteen dollars or something like that, per se, especially like the senior prom or, or a night thing, and they'll say, you know, take the twenties, so it's small amounts. I mean, we could, uh, we have that monthly newsletter and we could, you know, sometimes in the winter, it's a little lighter, we could certainly just write a little thing about if anybody ever wants to make a donation. We do get, um, we, sometimes unfortunately, if people pass away, um, people will say that they want money given to the, you know, to the senior program. What we've done with the last few demises or last two where people have given donations, is we've set that aside to do a tree planting project at, at the community center. Um, but if the next time it happens, if people ask, you know, we could say.
Well, that might be a newsletter. That might be a newsletter, a blur, because I mean, there's certain other organizations that are not shy about talking about a state.
Yeah, I could, you know, write up something for the newsletter and, you know, if anybody ever is feeling generous, we could use a little extra.
Uh, we've dominated questions here, anybody online, uh, have any questions? Nope, good.
Hey, 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 Matt?
Yeah, Mike.
Oh, good, you can hear me. Uh, for, for Rick and the, and Parker Rec, just last night, um, we had a few people come out regarding pickleball. Um, which was a little bit of a surprise, but it was also refreshing that we had people come to our meeting. Um, for public forum, could you, uh, provide a little bit of input because they had wanted us to consider more pickleball courts, but we're not quite sure where that's coming from. I mean, I know it's coming from Park and Rec, but could you explain that a little bit more and that, that direction?
Mike, and I, I don't know why they came there, because they've asked me, you know, where's, you know, where's the best time to speak and I, and we, we've told them that when, when it's the budget here, you know, the public hearing, the public has opportunity to, to speak, but uh, clear, we've had sometimes twenty, twenty come to our meetings, right? For maybe three or four months. Uh, we, we've made it clear to them that we, we do have in our five-year capital plan. So the plan, Mike, is that, you know, we got the four, uh, courts up at Denver that we, uh, put in about a year ago, October. The current plan is where the basketball court is next to those courts. Converting that to three permanent pickleball courts. Moving the basketball court toward the skate park. The skate park, we can turn ninety degrees, which when we first built it, that's the way it was anyway. And we've, we figured it all out, measured it can fit. We can have the skate park there at ninety degrees, you know, turned, a basketball court can still fit there. And then the current basketball court could become, uh, three permanent pickleball courts. That, that would give them seven permanent pickleball courts. The basketball court can be lined and they can put nets on them to have three more temporary pickleball, they could have ten pickleball courts up there. Um, believe me, somebody asked, suggested we put a roof over it, somebody said we need a clubhouse.
Somebody else said we ought to use the Walmart space.
Yeah, right, yeah. I think small steps, right? But that's what it is, I don't know why they came to that meeting, um. You know, I, I, I said, the, the time to come, if you want to make your opinion known, is there's a public hearing for the budget, which is March, I think March seventh, I think I didn't give the date. For, that's where people usually come if they want to, you know, are interested in anything on the budget. So I'm not sure why they came last night.
Okay. I just want to make sure it was nothing for, yeah, I just want to make sure it was nothing we were missing completely, and it sounds like, uh, Veronica, go ahead.
Just to continue on that, Rick, are, are those plans in your budget request? So is that something that can be communicated to them? I mean, I think it was great that they came to our meeting and quite frankly, the budget's being crafted now. So they're, they're giving feedback that this is important, so I don't want to discourage people you know, from letting us know what they're interested in. So I guess my question is, is it in your budget, in your budget request?
We have a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, it's in the five-year budget. Um, and when it came to our meeting four times, I think we told them every time, it's, it's in the budget that we've submitted. Uh, to the, you know, to the board, selectmen board, it's in a five-year plan.
Twenty-three, twenty-four plan.
For next, this summer, yeah.
Yeah.
If I could jump in on this too.
Yeah.
Some, it's, some, somebody said the magic words of pickleball. I think I, uh, had mentioned earlier that there's some, it'd be, there'd be some interest in having, uh, the lights, for instance, at Guilford Lakes controllable by, uh, user controls. Apparently right now it's set up, they have to be turned on and off from inside. And I know you've mentioned that's at least on the plan and sort of wondering how long that is.
Well, it's not in our plan, I think it's something we, we need to talk to Cliff Guernum about, but that is exactly a little what we're doing with the basketball court at Adams right now.
Yeah.
You know, it's the same system where the custodian would have to turn the lights on and off, but just like the high school tennis courts, they're going to be on their own system where, um, they're, they're on a a master timer, let's say we did, the latest we want them to go on is at nine thirty at night, for example, which the tennis courts are at, at the high school. That, um, there's a button you push, and when you push the button, the lights come on for like an hour. Uh, they can push it all they want after nine thirty, it won't come on because we don't want lights all night long. Um, but that, that's what we're doing at Adams right now. Uh, it's something we can have a conversation with Cliff, you know, about maybe doing at, uh, uh, at the tennis courts at, at, um, Guilford Lakes.
Because people play pickleball up there too, obviously.
Yeah.
I'll just note that in, in the capital plan, there is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to expand the pickleball courts. We have it listed as a, as part of the bond authorization, um, because it's over a hundred thousand dollars. So you won't see it in the capital here, if that's true, I was trying to get it in soon, because I knew that's what you were looking for. Um, but, uh, when the, when the bond authorization has come forward, um, that, that is part of it.
It may, it may not survive getting to the bond because we had allocated how much for, uh, basketball courts up at, uh?
I think about three forty maybe.
Yeah, we got more enough money, uh, ARPA money already set aside to do renovation work up there. I don't see a need to necessarily bond for, um, certain, for pickleball courts.
What's that, Lou?
I was going to say, without beating my, if you guys are done, I want to circle back to that. I, you've, you've shared this with me before, Rick, what you've just laid out. And everybody thinks it's an easy fix, but just, I mean, we have a, sometimes we get the good news and the bad news on these things. I mean, how expensive is it to, to make a switch like that, to have user control switches like that?
Oh, boy, good question, you know, I can't remember, we added that on for the Adams, because it wasn't the original part of the plan for Adams, so basketball court. I'd have to look it up, I'm going to be guessing, I don't remember what it is. Up to the top of my head.
I guess what I'm trying to get to, it's not like you run down to Home Depot and buy like some sort of punch switch and, and, and it's two hundred bucks, but it's thousands of dollars, yeah.
Um, right, I think it's something you do, if the lights are Musco lights, for example, I think it's something you get through Musco, because it communicates somehow with it, you know. Um, forty thousand, I think was the whole thing, Charles, including the lights. Yeah, I think we.
And that was actually area. Because the poles are down already.
Right, we put new poles up. I, I'm going to, I'm going to guess somewhere around between twenty, thirty thousand dollars, it's a guess.
Just to change over to a, a user control switch, just to make one change.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's important, but that's, that's real money, and people who are looking for these things need to know it's real money and appreciate it.
Yeah.
All right, thanks. All right, thanks.
Can we do one small one?
Sure.
I'm sorry, this is completely for my benefit, because I just don't know the answer at all. But is there any assistance from the state or the federal government with meals for seniors, meals on wheels? Or do they have a similar program that could handle it when we, maybe we say, we just can't make any more meals every day?
I'm Christie, Christie, or Meals on Wheels people may have granted, that program, we just do the cooking, we don't administer it. So I don't, you know, as far as the day-to-day senior meals that we oversee, no, it's all just based down and what the seniors pay. My guess is, they, well, they rely a lot on donations, fundraisers, they run that big Veterans Day meal. I know it's a big fundraiser for them. And then the balances, the senior pays for it based on income.
So you bring up a good point. I think it's worth a conversation with our state reps at the center to see if there is access to any kind of programs for those kind of subsidies. Typically, typically, we don't qualify for very many subsidies as a non-disadvantaged community. But it's worth the question. I'll take that.
I can imagine it's hard to find state and federal money, but sometimes it might even be in a pile somewhere. Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Thank you for sustaining that grilling.
I feel well-cooked.
I knew you were coming back with something.
Always does.
Thank you all. Go to work you do every day.
Thank you.
Next up is police. Next up is a police one-two-nine.
What up, guys?
I don't have quite as big a contingent as Rick.
Yeah, but you have a gun.
Mike's got the concealed.
Maybe, maybe not. It's a town building.
Just kidding, just kidding. Good afternoon, gentlemen. Yep, so if, I just started. And salaries at the top, civilian and police salaries are salaries, current salaries, based on collective bargaining agreements and any raises that are coming with them. One thing I did have in that police salary, and you'll see in a couple of other different areas throughout the budget, there were conversations with the Board of Ed about adding two officers to our total of thirty-eight to make it a total of forty. The reason for that is there were conversations about school security and things like that, and maybe adding two SROs to the, to the current SR that we have at the high school. So we did put in for two. Don't know where that's going to end up at the end of the day, but that, that is reflected in salaries as well as some of the other lines, things that were needed to be budgeted for those two positions. Our overtime, our training overtime and our replacement overtime, I know we have this conversation every year about that. And I have the, I have the cheat sheet if anybody needs it. They need anything, they need?
Yeah, I'll take it. Every year, I feel like I'm going to relearn it.
Yes, that's our cheat sheet. And basically, overtime is, is, is any overtime place somebody above and beyond working their shift, they're held over for a call, things like that. Replacement overtime is replacing somebody who has taken a day off, booked off sick, and that is to get us back to our minimum patrol staffing. And training overtime is replacing anybody who is going to training or replacing them on their shift, so that they can attend training, and someone replaces them on the shift. So those are the three areas there. We use a, particularly during the overtime and the replacement, we use a three-year average as we have for a number of years to try and get us to the number that we use for that, for that total for the line.
Is the average going up or down?
It varies. It varies. Some of it, each year, it varies on, there are a number of things. It varies on the staffing. Last year, our staffing, we were, it was kind of tough. We were down between people that either retired or lateral to another department, and people who are out with extended sick leave, at one point, seven people, so.
What I was trying to get to is, this year, it sounds like a little bit, so, but some of the increases reflected in simply salary.
Some of it is because the hourly rate at time and a half bumps that up that automatically, the two percent or whatever the rate is.
That's where I was trying to get a feel for whether the average had kicked up this year.
Yeah.
The average did kick up, because the twenty twenty actuals was low by half, it was half of what twenty twenty-one was. So you just lost the best year for that three-year average.
So, and when we look at that twenty twenty, because of the pandemic, everything being shut down, things like that, it's kind of an anomaly number. We're using it, but we're, you know, it's not helpful sometimes. So that's an average for the replacement, and the overtime, we use a three-year average on that to get that number. And it's been pretty close. I mean, I think we've done pretty well using that three-year average for that, for that budgeted number.
Before you get too far, Mitch and I would just like to note, back to the discussion of the new SROs, there is a revenue offset for those from the Board of Education. So the town is not incurring the entire cost.
Right, so, and again, we have an offset for the SRO for the high school. Already had some conversations about increasing that offset for.
Correct, and that is reflective in the budget numbers.
In the salary, in the salary.
And I might as well at this point, we, I've had conversations both with the chief and the superintendent together, and separate conversations with each of them. And I think, I think the plan is going to be SRO per year over the next couple of years to phase it in. Just as a little bit of background, the Board of Education and the superintendent are under significant pressure from certain quarters to enhance security in our schools, based on what has happened.
Do these numbers reflect that?
These numbers reflect two.
How much, what is the offset percentage from the Board of Education?
Originally, the offset was twenty thousand a year for the current SRO at the high school, which is a very small offset. I've asked to increase that, because pay keeps coming up for that, for that officer, upgrade that. And as well, the offset for the other two would be about half of their pay would be what I would request. We would have to work that out with the Board of Ed, but that's what I have in here, is about half of their salary. They're in the school about three quarters of the year, but we would assume half their salary, they would assume half their salary.
Budget is showing a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar offset.
Total for three.
But we'll make those, if, if moving forward, it's one person, at the time that's decided, then we can make those adjustments.
Because this is in concert with some other security measures that the schools are taking.
Right.
And things that we have done in the interim to kind of bridge gaps as well.
If we were to go to forty with our population of twenty-two thousand, three hundred, have you done comparisons to the size of the police force in towns? I mean, in relation to population of towns and schools, et cetera?
We have, and we look at the numbers. I don't have that list with me here, but I certainly have that list at my office. And it varies a little bit, about one point nine to about two point four officers per thousand people is a number that's been in the towns around, if I did the calculations. That's just officers per population. It doesn't include specialized spots like the SRO position or anything like that.
So we fall in that average sort of? Guilford falls.
We're in that, in that area right now. And I also believe under replacement, there is some ARPA funding that is, said some of that as well. So, you know, since the pandemic, like the fire department, we've been putting in reimbursement for anything that's pandemic-related. We've done the forms, the FEMA forms, we sent them through. And I don't know how quickly that comes back, but, you know, we've been doing it since the pandemic started.
So nine years.
Right, but, you know, we know what we're putting the minimums there, so.
Well, he's talking some, we've been using some ARPA money for that as well, so, yeah, so that's.
That we have.
Sick leave exchange, that's, that's collective bargaining, that's, there's only a couple of officers that have that availability. If they have above a hundred and forty days on the books, they can cash in anything over that one forty. And that's the calculated number for that. In that line, special events, special events is, is typically overtime charged for events in town that are town events that we provide police officers with that aren't paid for by an outside entity. So things like the fair parade, things like that. So we'll have the officers down there providing traffic and security. The fair is separate, that's, that's an outside job that gets paid from outside, but the fair parade, and there's a number of, I can go through the whole list if you need them, but there's a number of other that are in there. And we use an average cost of officer average cost for the amount of officers that were assigned to each one of those events, and that's where we go. Education payment, again, that's, that's, that's a collective bargaining agreement for a yearly payment to officers who hold different levels of degrees. Utilities, that, again, our utilities, we know have gone up, so that number, that number has certainly jumped. Communications and electronics, that, that's only gone up a little bit, but the gasoline, I know, has gone really high as well. And we've done a pretty good job. Some of the things we're looking to do is trying to get hybrids in there to save us some money. It's tough to get, you know, can't get our hands on it, and as soon as we can, I think, we'll be able to save some, save some money with gas. Building maintenance, again, a lot of that is, is, some of that, those numbers, we've already gotten requests for increases, mowing the lawn, sprinklers, things like that, increases for the annual, the annual payments on those. So that's reflected in there. Service contracts, another one, this one is, is pretty big. The jump on the service contracts, but in the service contracts also, we just, as you're aware, we switched over to a new body camera and system that we were also, through attrition, rotating our cameras into the cars to have the same cameras. Right now, we have two separate systems. With that, we, our old system, we were using a server, an in-house server to store all our video. As you can imagine, that video adds up very, very quickly, and the amount of stuff that we have to store, we have to store it for up to four years, is a lot. With the new system, as most of the new body cam and car systems are now, they're all cloud, they're cloud-based. So we have to play, pay for that cloud storage. That is a big number under service contracts. That's only just about all of that, that, that increase under, under service contracts is, is for those service contracts and those cameras. Uniform and clothing, again, that's, that's collective bargaining numbers through collective bargaining agreement for uniform costs to each officer. Copiers are staying flat. Police medical, we've gone up a little bit. Again, those are charges that are coming to us through places like the L, where we, where we send our officers for medical, either for entry-level exams or hurt on duty, and they have to go get treated. They have to go through an exam there. Those are, a lot of the costs come out of there. Their costs have gone up. They sent, they went up in February, they're going up again in July, so those costs are reflected there. Our operating supplies, again, those are, those are things we use day-to-day, pretty much everything we use. It's only gone up a small amount, and it's, you know, we've tried to stay, stay pretty tight with a lot of that stuff. A lot of that has to do with, with costs associated with dues belonging to a number of regional pre-teams and things like that, that have gone up each year, have gone up in cost of participating in that. Computer hardware stayed flat. We try to keep that as flat. We do use a lot of work with, with J through the IT. There's a lot of work keeping, keeping those numbers in check for us. Special investigations, that, that's an area where we use, I've added some costs there this year. A lot of our investigations now are technology-based investigations, phones, car systems, things like that, that we have to do search warrants to get information from. Those search warrants cost us money when we do a search warrant for a phone company or for data. It never used to, legislature, you know, over time realized that it's a lot of work for the people to get those records. So there's an administrative fee that's associated with that, so that, that's added in there. Training and development, the same thing, that's, that's training, that, that got bumped up a little bit. I do have, I do have a couple of trainings in there that, we did get a grant for CIT training, so it helped us last year. If it's available again, we'll try and get it. If not, CIT is the crisis intervention training. The goal is to have everybody in the department trained. Right now, we've got about fifteen people trained, fourteen or fifteen people. But it is a five-day training. It's, you know, it costs to send people, plus you're down someone for five days. So we can't send everybody all at once. So that's, that's reflected, that was that, that increase there reflected there. And then vehicle maintenance went down a little bit. We looked at a number of years, over the years, the cost going, going along with that. And so we could stay a little bit in that line.
I guess it just, the vehicle maintenance, I mean, are the explorers just where more maintenance is? It seems like the average is going up substantially. I know we've kind of kept up with buying things, but we're just not getting the service out of them that we use.
Well, again, I think, and we, I think we talked about this from last time, when we were talking about the cars under the Capitol and the idle time and things like that, we just pulled all the data on that, which is, it's amazing that a car, a police car with a, with a, with a hundred thousand miles on it is like a car with almost four hundred thousand with the idle hours, on the idle hours that we do. They're averaging, Ford, Ford says thirty-three miles per hour of idle time on your car.
Yeah, I just, it's the change that, you know, because I, I thought we've always kind of kept up the vehicle replacement and everything, but it seems like, like your parts and everything are just going up just like.
Costs for the parts have gone sky-high, and some, some things are hard to get if it's, if it's, if it's anything to do with a computer or any of those onboard systems. It's very difficult.
Just disappointing, you know, you think you make the investment in new equipment, but it's like the trucks and public workers. All right, and special investigation, but it says equipment. Is that like a five times increase? Is it equipment or the requirement that we have to pay for things that we use?
Both, we put under there. So it's a special investigation, so we have equipment, so sometimes we don't know what we need until we know we need it. So particularly in our detective unit, things, particularly with technology, things are changing very quickly. I'll give you an example. A couple of years ago, we, we went out and bought trail cameras out of that, that line, because perfect, and that's what we're using, the ATVs with the trails, the trailheads.
So it's not as much unfunded mandates where we're required to pay for things that we did afterwards. We have to have things.
These are things that, you know, we get somewhere and we need something. You know, where, where does it come from? And it has to be in those situations. You know, get a large-scale event or something, and you've got it, I don't know, we've got to go, or it's two degrees out, we've got to go out by tarps or get tarps. You know, we need to get it, take it from somewhere, and, you know, sometimes that is.
Okay, I just started looking at, you know, like a five hundred percent increase there. The next one then was. Nine-nine-nine-twenty-eight. I'm looking at twenty-three actuals to revise budget that you're getting at. What you're asking.
Ten percent. Yeah, I just added five hundred dollars to that one.
But I know, I went from nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars to five thousand.
That we used, right. So, and again, that's the unknown on it, right?
Yeah.
So it's.
So are you basing, you know, it started, there's some particular events that happened that made it go from one thousand to five thousand, and you're basing the new numbers on the five thousand? Or can we go back to base them on nine hundred?
Well, some of them are because of the new, the new, the new things with the search warrants, things like that. No, before, like I said, there was no charge before. Now we're getting charged for everything that we do with technology, search warrant on. We are getting charged, bank records, we're getting charged for things like that. So that's included in that, in that, in that process.
All right, and the, I'm going to have a couple more originally. Maintenance service contracts, is there some specific, I mean, they literally doubled, is there more? Is that the body cams and all that?
The biggest, the biggest piece of that increase right there is the body cams, well, the body cam.
Yeah, but they're necessary, so.
Right, cloud computing, that's the mandate from the accountability, so we.
I I had no problem with that. You sort of make sure that's.
It's it's a lot of money every year for that story.
The other thing, when you talked about special events, you know, while you were talking about, I was just assuming that events were down during COVID. And now they're up, but then, you know, I go back and I looked at twenty. Fiscal year twenty actuals were forty-five hundred dollars. If, you know, we're almost triple that now. Do you think twenty was pre-COVID? Trying to get where COVID was and what special new events are because, you know, we're doubling that one again.
Yeah, so so that 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 number is it's from uh again, some of those costs are based on. The cost hourly rates that have gone up for the officers based on the collective bargaining.
So it isn't any specific more town events that.
No, the the town events are all the same. And like I said, I had a list. There's about twelve or thirteen of them here that we, you know, the candlelight walk uh on Broad Street. Uh the Christmas tree lighting.
Seems like we're doubling the entry for salaries at that point then? Yeah, we're not doing more events, but we're doing. Number of hours, so the increase would literally three times since twenty or double since twenty-three.
Well, twenty-three actuals are only year to date, and they've spent sixty-four hundred dollars and there's still five months to go. So and I know that there's a couple of events. There's a couple of events coming. Yeah, so what what happens is, you know, particularly over the last couple of years, a number of these didn't go off.
But even twenty-two, that's full year actual. I mean, forty-seven to, you know, over double that now.
And there were still there were still events last year that.
That were canceled.
Okay. Yeah, so this that that number is, if if every event that's a special event in town is manned or or if it's gonna be run.
Yeah, but I'm trying to get to, are we doing some more, are we doing more events? Or is there some specific number of events that we should be aware of that that we have this additional cost and and find a way to fund them? Like the break, I mean, we have to protect people during the break, but, you know, are there five new events that we gotta be aware of? Costs is really.
We haven't, we haven't added events to this at all, you know, things like the graduations. We've always done the graduations, we've always done the candlelight.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to get to, is it more events or is it more salary? It sounds like it's mostly more salary. You know, we double it up or put it here around salary.
Uh no, it will be. Yeah, I think this is this is a way to break it out. I think this is just a way to break it out from any of the other overtimes.
The town of adding people to have to be there for the event.
It's not part of their regular duty. This is over and above.
But it's still a salary account. It's a salary account, it's just broken out.
Yeah, probably should say probably should say salaries, special events.
Anything that starts five one on the second column is a salary. Just.
I mean, we could plug that number into the overtime line, it would just get it.
That that answers my question.
Just breaks it out a little bit. And I think that that level of detail is helpful.
Somebody's gonna ask, how much does it cost to have people to staff the fair day parade? Well, now you have the answer.
And and what I've done over the last couple of years is when I calculated, I calculated an average cost based on. Officer, sergeant, lieutenant, because all three of those ranks have the eligibility to work that overtime. So if I just say I'm gonna pay overtime for a police officer and I have a sergeant and lieutenant working it.
Yeah, I was just trying to get to, is are we adding events?
No, these are the same events that we've had for a number of years.
So you're looking at actuals here? If you were to look at the budgets year over the year, you would see that that would be. You know, more in line uh year to year. What happens is if the events are canceled, then we don't have the expense. So that's why you're seeing these ups and downs and in the line items.
In fact, Charles, if you uh you look at just the percentage, the overtime percentage, based on this five year, the chief went through, is up about eight percent. And so is special events, the same pattern based and that is basically mostly based on the history and salary.
All right, Bud, I guess I throw this same question out all the time. Uh I pose it to the fire department too about replacement costs. I see that we got estimated replacement costs of four hundred and thirty-four thousand coming up this year. And I always wonder if we hired the two guys who floated around and covered those empty uh the shifts where somebody's missing. Would we end up ahead? That kind of thinking, like if we had two guys maybe extra or full time. And they covered shifts where we're missing someone. And then the other thing I always wonder too is maybe the minimum number of officers you want out there. Is there any flexibility if it's short term? Can you say we're gonna, we can run one man down for eight hours?
We we have some flexibility on the on the minimums. With with our exact numbers. And we do that sometimes. Um and then sometimes we have to put extra people on, we get a windstorm coming, we get a snowstorm coming, we put people we have to. In regard to having extra people on the on the staff, certainly love to have it.
Balance would.
No, I know, I know. Trying to be physically responsible and uh you know, have have the people available. It it's much like I I talked about earlier, where, you know, last fiscal year, we were down seven people for most of that year. And I keep a running list on my desk of things that impact our replacement overtime. And, you know, seven people, whether it be for a month at a time or, you know, six months. It's, that's a hard number that you have to fill for that time.
That's kind of my answer. You're running down on men already.
Also important to note that we're, the reason we're also running down is that how long it takes to sort of make an officer, right? So a brand new new hire is a ten to eleven month process, literally, because they have to go from, but the time we get through the police commission hiring them. The town puts them on and then we send them to the academy. The academy is six months. Then they're here in town doing field training for a number of months. And it's literally ten to eleven months until they're hitting the road. So for us, if we lose someone today, if I can't get a lateral in here. Uh then, which we've been somewhat successful thankfully for, but it's takes us that long to replace. So we're always running down. And then we have a, we have a budgeted minimum of in terms of, or sorry, a maximum in terms of number of officers. We can't just keep the the ball rolling, right?
Yeah, so at a baseline, you just need to find more officers, period.
Yeah, with adding to the top line so that we can have.
So you're not short shifts, okay?
Yeah, there's people, you know, it's 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 a push all the time. There are people retiring, there's people coming into the bottom. And and the wild card is somebody get hurt, you know, we're always getting officers hurt out there because of the nature of what they do sometimes.
It's probably why you have trouble recruiting people. It's not a little bit of a dangerous job.
It's part of it, you know, sure.
Anyone uh on the Zoom uh have any questions?
Good to go.
Uh I'm sorry to interrupt you again. I mean, I mean, just to make my exit, and I just want to tell you, it's such a benefit to be here and be invited to this meeting. Appreciate all the insight, being able to ask questions. I gotta pick up my daughter, join you tomorrow.
You've got it. You're welcome to keep the the definitions.
You'll you'll explain it to us next time.
I don't know about that.
That's the final exam.
Keep hoping there's a solution. Solution's not that easy.
All right, anything else? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you for your time.
I'll tell the chairman we didn't miss him.
Up next is town properties, one three nine.
Waiting patiently.
Hey, I didn't get to bring anybody.
All on a disability. All right, what do you got for us, my friend?
Same as the usuals. Just go down line by line.
That works easier.
Okay, uh full-time salaries, part-time salaries. And overtime, all comes from human resources, all contractual. Come back to our line four stipends, it's remaining the same at five hundred dollars.
Steve, I gotta change that up mine then. You got you got somebody you think you guys.
Well, usually my yearly update from my uh.
That's why I had, that's why I had it zero, it was Mitch. Not not Mitch, Mitch's reports had it zero. I thought I missed it, but it was actually.
No, when I went back and looked at it. Travel expenses are remaining the same. Um utilities have gone up. Um I think it was about fifteen thousand. Electricity mostly is as previous stated, uh we're going up thirty-five percent on that alone. Um we also have a couple more buildings that are paying electricity for, nothing huge, but. Adding to uh. The bills. Phones remaining the same. Street lighting is also going up because of the electric. Street lighting maintenance actually is, I can drop that a little, because it's been in charge of them for two or three years now. And it's kind of stabilizing now finally. Fire hydrant rentals went up. Uh I think that's due to.
Yeah, those are exact, exact costs, but those are costs based on exact number of hydrants. The linear fee and the and current current cost.
Cemetery maintenance is remaining the same. Uniform allowance is per contract, it's remaining the same. Repairs and maintenance has gone up. That's mostly due to uh. There's no sprinkler inspections, there's an eternal and there's a apartment connection inspection. So that's each at five locations that has to happen. So that has gone up. Maintenance supplies.
Is that a local requirement that was added recently?
It's all in the state code now. It's all from the fire department. The whole big list. Maintenance supplies, I can keep that the same. Seasonal decorations also the same, vehicle. Maintenance is also the same, as vehicles are getting older, but on my capital, it's hopefully two new vehicles, so. Vehicle maintenance may go down, but the price of vehicles are going up.
Questions?
I think I asked this question before, I forgot to answer though. Is the calculation of fire hydrants in from over a part of the.
Yes, they are in there.
Yeah, they are in those last year. But are they part of the settlement with the the end users?
Users only pay for the.
That goes that goes back to probably the early two thousands when somebody sitting in this chair said. We should be charging the people who have street lights and fire hydrants.
Rest of that, I mean, yeah, except that it's invalid, it's just that you gotta appreciate those costs.
Any uh questions for Steve? Online?
Good to go.
Thank you, sir.
Steve was hoping for a lot of questions.
Thank you.
The changes, I think, where he said it was a statement mandate or a fire department mandate.
On state code, it's fire, the department has to enforce. State codes, the building codes changed dramatically. What's her name told us that, uh on the building codes, so. Next up.
Oh, I have engineering genesis is out, so we will talk about that budget. We can do it at the end. Um so I have public works. One three six.
All right. First time through, I like this. Not this by fire.
What's the number?
One three six.
Got it. All right.
So the full-time salaries, that's contractual. Based off of the uh work orders, that's the back charge into the, so that's actually a credit to the transportation.
Hang on, Dave, if I can interrupt for a second. The the uh the full-time salaries are contractual. We've made the adjustments where people are moving up steps in the existing contract. But this contract does expire at the end of this June, so there's there's money put aside and reserved for personnel for additional. Increases for the public works department.
Part-time seasonal salaries, uh you'll see we went down. We had a, we had two attendants at the brush. At the stump dump and uh we eliminated one of the positions to to cut down on the cost there. Boards and commission secretary, that's contractual. Overtime, we kept it the same. Expenses and travel, we went up just a little bit, uh and that's for the price increase for the food, for the uh for the restaurants. Unable to eat for the storm emergencies. Uh utilities, utilities went up, figured that in. Uh the fuel went up big time. And that again, that's off of the numbers that they gave us and what we actually use. Building maintenance.
And it makes sense. If you look at their actuals today is almost fifty. So, you know, they're they're clearly using that. And of course, it would depend depend on storms and. How many storms you would have to go up and down.
Yeah, I don't wanna hear that.
I know. Sorry.
Building maintenance, we went up just a little bit. Um the oil water separator, I I factored it for one extra pump out. We usually do seven. So that we stay in compliance with the MS four. Uh the sprinkler systems, repairing the pipes in the cold storage base. That went up a little bit because the price from fire protection team went up. Road maintenance, radio maintenance, I'm sorry, the tactile, we just kept that the same as last year. Uh equipment repair and maintenance, we only went up. Seven thousand, eight thousand, um and that's based off of the price of parts, parts went up. We tried to keep it within reason. Uh the uniform and clothing allowance, that's all contractual. Uh contracted services, tub grinder, uh all of those prices, we we only went up. Seven hundred and fifty dollars based on uh from last year. Copier and lease supplies, that's uh that's the exact number from the company. For that. Office supplies, we went up eight hundred dollars for office supplies. Minor tools, we did, we had a little bump there, five hundred dollars, and that's to reflect, we're getting a bucket truck, we're gonna need to purchase tools for them. The radio maintenance, that should, or I'm sorry, the road maintenance, that went up ten thousand. Uh last year, we did the the chip seal. And it was. It was uh actually was a hundred and seventy-nine thousand last year, so I went off of that figure. Because that's what we did last year. We may have to cut back on roads or do different treatments, but I think we can stay within this number. Instead of doing just chip seal, we may do crack seal.
Crack seal, I was gonna say.
Or like a thin overlay, um something like that.
Fewer calls in my office about the chips. Well, we have a lot every year, that's the most calls I get.
A lot of bikers and the chip seal is not good.
Agreed.
So. You're gonna see road maintenance in the winter. We went down substantially. Uh we're gonna be using less material. Uh less salt, less overtime.
That was that switch from that mixture that you used to use and now you.
And then, uh as you can see, we'll still keep uh around twenty yards on hand for fire department for sandbags and storm emergencies. Uh the plow cutting edges, that's the actual number they gave me today for the for the blades. And let's see. Road striping and signs, we kept that. That's the same. Uh equipment rental, you see we went out and that is because at the bottom there, we're looking to rent the back before the town for one month. And what it does is it sucks out all the basins and it jets, cleans all the pipes. So the theory is we're gonna use it for a month, start start, you know, probably on the shore, work our way north. To start cleaning out, because our clam truck can take out the sediment in the basin, but it can't take out anything in the pipes. So if we rented, the cost of this piece of equipment to the town would be five hundred and eight thousand dollars. So we could. So we could rent that for probably thirty years.
It would be the cost if you bought it.
Yeah, right. Oh, yeah, big time. So for us to rent it for the, for the entire month, our guys know how to operate it, so we're operating it. And we just go out there and do the basins.
What's that called?
It's called a vector. It's a uh, catch basin cleaning truck.
And once a year. Second, be.
I call it the second.
Probably for years now, we've been just cleaning out the basins with the clam shell. It doesn't get it a hundred percent, but it doesn't do any of the cross pipes. So if a catch basin is on one side of the street, goes to another catch basin across the street and then goes to an outflow, we can.
I understand that the question is doing that for a month, we can get to the portion of what we have.
We'll, we'll do a portion. Each year we do a portion or we do a section of town. Okay? It's not like we have to do it every year because we do have the clam shell to keep, keep the catch basins clean. But with MS four, we gotta make sure our catch basin.
Ten grand in fifty years, you know?
So, yeah.
Yeah, never mind the make. I mean, you know, the thing's gonna break.
Right. And then the theory too is once we clean these pipes, they're not gonna be enclogged anymore because we're not using sand and salt, just as a salt.
Yeah.
So that's. If we even have to use it.
You don't say those things out loud.
Yeah. And then education and training, I went up on that. Um, you see, I went up on that substantially. The crew needs a lot of educational training and I've been sending them through it. But there's a lot involved with uh, as far as the bucket truck goes, they need a lot of certifications. We're gonna have an artwork sign on the crew, so we should pay for his license, his license. So that's why we went up there.
Could say this in other ways in terms of injury and other issues.
Yes. Let me uh, let me just congratulate you or thank you for, you know, willing to invest in our employees because this is really what we're doing. We're just trying to make it safer, make them effective. And uh, you know, seeing, seeing the investment you're looking and continuing to make it now, I think is absolutely right.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so that, that's why you see the price difference in that uh, the T S P parking lot, that's, that's the same.
Yep.
Um.
To note about training, why, why is workers comp lying? Because we don't have the number yet?
We don't budget for workers comp. Um, what happens is, you know, we, if we have to pay it out, then we get the money back from the insurance company. So um, sometimes it. Other, other years, it was just carryover.
So it shouldn't affect you at all. Do I have any workers comp?
We don't budget for it. We don't budget for it. That's the difference.
Okay, so there's no situations where we're not recompensated through insurance.
We, we pay out whatever we receive. Um, and then we there, we pay the differential based on the particular contract. Um, between what, um, what we receive and their total compensation.
Matt, I have a question.
Lou.
Is the fuel, the fuel estimates almost double? Is that based on, when was that estimate worked up? I mean, obviously, nobody knows what next year's bringing, but at the moment, we're closer to last year's numbers than we are this past summer.
Lou, I, I have that asterisk. I wanted, I wanted to dig a little deeper on that. We only allocated sixty thousand for last year and we already had the prices for fuel when we uh, when we set the budget last year. So there, sixty thousand uh, seems, doesn't seem to make sense when we already knew uh, what the, what our bid prices were for fuel.
Sixty thousand, let alone a hundred.
Last year's budget for public works. Um, so that was most likely one of the lines that we, that we hit. We, we made some significant cuts last year.
So, so we've spent almost forty-nine thousand dollars in the first six months of twenty-two, twenty-three.
That was my point. That's why that equates to a hundred and eleven that.
Right. And we have sixty thousand budgeted, so the chances are we're gonna go over budget for this year for fuel.
Yeah, we're just gonna park the trucks in February.
We're buying bikes.
I was just gonna say, you can go to bikes.
Because there will not be any.
Like for, for this current budget, let me understand this, for this current budget, don't we, uh, don't we have like, didn't we have a contract from a year ago?
Yeah, that's a point I was just making, Lou. I, I wanna look at what we did on that line because at this time last year, we had the contract, we knew what the contract was. And we only budgeted sixty thousand, but we've already spent forty-nine. Uh, so some, something, and then, and Mary Jane just mentioned, that might have been one of the areas where uh, we gave the department the opportunity to make some cuts and that's where they made them.
Okay. But I mean, I just wanna make sure I'm understanding, for the most part, for that line item, we're buying, we're locking in a price at the beginning of the year, right?
We lock a price in every December. We go out to bid, uh, and we lock it, we lock it in in December.
Right, that's that thing we get.
For the following fiscal year.
Right. Okay.
And we're committed to the quantity.
So we, we were, in a sense, we were insulated from the, from the summer.
The prices in the department request, yeah, represent what we got. It's like what I'm saying, is something doesn't make sense about last.
Last year, if I remember, the commission made some significant cuts um, for the budget.
I didn't, I didn't think we cut fuel though.
I, 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 I. We can look, but I, I know this particular budget, we made um, significant cuts last year.
It was pretty skinny this hard deal last year, I remember.
They came in with a skinny one. That's why I think, not sure.
Uh, it, it, we require more information. That's what it boils down to.
Say that again, wait.
We just need, we just need more information, don't we?
Yeah, yeah. We're gonna, we're gonna go back and look at the, what assumptions were made last year.
Okay, sounds good.
I think they were also, this is Veronica, I think last year, uh, they made significant cuts to their budget because they were looking um, to increase their staffing. And so they didn't wanna put it in the, but increase their budget. So they made cuts so that they could have staffing because that's what they felt was more important.
Was that last year or the year before?
That's what I.
Last two years, last two years.
We want, we want one a year because we want to get back up the fold.
That's kind of what I was alluding to without saying staffing. I knew cuts were made in areas so that we could get people in.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else?
No, thanks.
Those are the cuts, those are alterations.
Now we're tailors here? Anything else? Thank you very much. Well done, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Fire.
Fire department, one, three, one.
Ken.
Hello.
How are you?
Hello, man.
On the sign, up here?
Yeah.
Yeah, come on down.
So I'll get. Down here. I have, I have two grandsons on the way, so I'm trying to be.
Well, congratulations.
Yeah, thank you.
So what I give you, you still wanted to know what you look like.
Let me say, I've been given the mandate by my, my daughter, my daughter-in-law, that if you come into the cold, anything, don't even think about.
And it comes to say hi to the guy. Best part of HR.
Oh, he likes to go say hi to Rachel. Sitting with us?
Think it will be.
Uh, gonna be, ceremony will be at the, um, Woodfield.
It's all in walking distance for me.
Don't worry about that.
Sometimes everything happens possible.
Maybe I shouldn't have said that. Is that on camera?
Don't worry about it.
Record it.
Oh, boy.
I'm in trouble.
All right, floor is yours, Mr. Chairman.
Well, thank you. And thank you for entertaining us today as always. Um, first of all, I wanna um, let the board of selectmen know and anybody else in the public that the uh, budget that we're presenting today is one that was unanimously approved by the Board of Fire Commissioners at a regular January meeting. That was unanimous. There was not a lot of discussion in the fact that as we go through the lines, you'll see. But I do wanna point out a couple of things. First of all, the budget as presented is uh, takes into consideration three things. One, year-to-date actual expenditures that we've had through the December meeting. Um, secondly, is a three-year average. And then also we included the overages that we've had the last couple of years to see where obviously, um, if we were short, I, I wanna say short budgeting ourselves. And we also, um, we discussed at our meeting and we discussed amongst the administration, that we all know that the last three to four years have been trying at best. They've been exhausted. Um, not only in, in its on-off fronts, its personnel, it's the cost of providing the services that we provide. And also the number of incidents as well as vendor increases, which we have no control over. And I, I will say, and I know the chief doesn't like to hear this, but last year in the calendar year, we had over thirty-nine hundred and fifty calls, which is an increase of well over three hundred calls in the calendar year that we have from the previous year. So the calls for service have gone up, obviously. Um, we still continue diligently and I, I give the administration credit. They, they are diligent about trying to secure funds and grants. And we do a great job of that. I think we, we had a discussion at one of our ordinance where they have well over uh, two point five million dollars or something like that in funds that we had, grants that we've um, been able to obtain to offset expenditures. In addition, as you know, we're a revenue-producing entity as well. Um, and we looked at over the last three years and obviously you all know that it's over a million dollars the last couple of years. We did increase the revenue line because we're not sure where we're gonna, what we can forecast for Medicaid and Medicare. So we did forecast nine hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, which is roughly a thirty thousand dollar increase, I believe.
Yeah, I just wanted to know, if you look at your revenue paperwork, that's not in, included. I, I didn't get that in, in time, I, I printed it, so.
But overall, um, the bottom line is that the overall budget that we're presenting this year is four hundred and thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollar increase for a eight point zero one percent increase. I'm not sure whether, Jane, did they have this or do they have something else?
Uh, they, they, they have the sheets that I sent out. It should, it should match what.
Okay.
Your numbers. Yeah, yeah.
So I'd like to um, go through, if you don't mind, this year I'd like to start with the variable expenses.
Okay.
So as you can see in the variable expenses, we can go line by line if you'd like, but uh, two biggest increases in the variable expenses, which we have control over. Um, the utilities, uh, per the town contracts and um, recommendation of the uh, director of finance, we increased the utilities by thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars, which is roughly a thirty-five percent increase. And that was per the contracts and recommendation of the board of, uh, of the finance director. In addition, the fuel for a contract, that was roughly, I believe, forty percent or forty-one percent, but that's twenty-two thousand, three hundred and thirty-six thousand. So two things that we don't have any control over. Um, the one thing that we do have control over and we try to, but again, as the operating supplies, there's a twenty thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollar increase. And again, a lot of that is due to vendor increases. We get notified, uh, and I think Mike was just telling me out there, we've been notified recently of ten percent, fifteen percent increases on our cost of, of supplies and equipment that we need to operate. Um, so on the, if you will, on the variable side, although it's eighty-one thousand, nine ninety-two, which is a ten point three percent increase, uh, roughly fifty-eight thousand of that is out of our control. Nothing that we can, you know, do anything different about. It's the cost of the contracts that are secured. Before I move on, is there any questions in the variables that you'd like to ask? All good. Regarding the salaries, um, accounts, um, so the full-time salaries, as you know, the majority of the increases that you see there are due to the contracts that were signed by the uh, town and the, and the union. Um, so in the full-time salaries, I have eighty-six thousand, four hundred and thirty-five uh, dollars, which this year is a two point five percent increase in the um, unions uh, uh, negotiations. And also that includes a one increase to a management contract um, that we have. Regarding part-time salaries, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars again, per, uh, we have uh, per the contractor, if you will. Um, commission clerk, there was no increase. Overtime, the, the overtime is uh, based again on a three-year average and also looking at what we had for overages if we did last year was minimal. And we believe that the sixteen thousand dollars obviously is, is what we need to uh, to take care of the overtime expenditure. Stipends, you'll see a decrease in stipends and that is due to the balance of E M T and paramedic stipends. Paramedics are paid differently than the E M T stipends. Uh, I believe one is forty-five hundred, one is fifteen hundred. Um, we have a, a balance there. We were able to bring that down. So now we have, um, we have a decrease there of six thousand dollars. Um, the biggest item in the, uh, or the second biggest item is the replacement salaries. And I think this is one area that through the years, we've kind of shortchanged ourself. And replacement salaries isn't, it's, it's a host of, I'm gonna say piece of pie. Um, we have replacement for training, we have replacement for shifts, we have replacement for captains, we have workers comp, uh, that we've replaced for. So it's a, it's a host of a, a number of things. Order ins, when we have to order in personnel, or call-ins when we have simultaneous calls back to back, where we need to call in personnel to man a third or fourth ambulance, uh, military replacement. Um, so it's a, it's a, it's a huge piece and we have all the data and the stats to go with that, uh, to back it up. But again, and a lot of that replacement salaries, again, when you're replacing, it's based on what the contract increase was as well. So that's part of that as well. Um, the subtotal, um, as you can see, is three hundred and fifty-five thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars, which is seven point six percent. Um, and I will answer, or we will answer any questions that you have regarding the salaries. Real quick, real quick, Ken. Yes. Mentioned, um, I heard you correctly that the uh, uh, commission secretary, you said was flat?
According to what, the number we were given.
What is that? It should be, we, we do, uh, mentioned at the beginning, uh, all, all of the recording secretaries raised in the um, hourly rate from eighteen seventy-five, nineteen twenty-five. So what should this be? So I came with six ninety-three, just based on the same number of hours. My apology to the board. Small thing to make sure we're saying. We get an increase of roughly, what, eighteen dollars? Two point six seven percent. Sorry about that. Any other question?
Um, just to, yeah, again, every year we go through the same thing, the replacements versus, and I look at PD, their replacement salaries represent about ten percent of their uh, overall salary plus. Yours, uh, a little less than thirty, maybe twenty, twenty-eight, twenty-five percent. What's the difference between the two? Why, why, why are they at the ten percent threshold that you guys are at? That's a difference.
So uh, you know, to start that, the replacement and overtime, I know we talked about both categories. Um, firefighters don't get paid overtime until they work an extra forty-four hours every two hundred and twelve hours. So that straight time portion of um, of, like I say, the pay comes from the replacement. Same thing like workers comp. It, the workers comp line gets reimbursed, but the other one-third of that comes from replacement salaries. When someone, when somebody's out on injury, that's the way we pay them out of that account line. It comes from replacement salaries. So there, I think there's more variables in our replacement piece of how things get replaced and what they do. Um, the same thing like trucks breaking down, like we maintain all of our own fleet of vehicles that were, and it has to come in. The police department brings their vehicle to public works, so there's no increase in their budget. So there's a lot of other variable things in there that account for that piece.
As we, we, we maintain staffing levels the same, whereas police may not always be able to fill or backfill, I would think. I don't know.
And our minimum staffing levels are very much different than a T D. They, they have, we only have five on duty. We have.
Not necessarily, you guys know. Not necessarily a budget question, but I, I know one of the things that you use to track performance is response time. How are we doing this?
Really good. Um, the, the impact of safer from two thousand and eighteen till, or about a year, is second year past, uh, the three-year commitment to the government on staffing. And we're maintaining our seven-minute. our seven-minute response times that we look at a monthly at the Commission meetings to report out on, um, town-wide, and still under nine minutes in North Guilford. Uh, previous to Safer, we were at thirteen and a half minutes, uh, response times was the average response time to the north end of town, and essentially, we've been, we've closed that gap now to seven, say, across town, over the, and we've held that. There's the, I say the problem, let's say problem, things that we watch or that we are watching closely, it's always back-to-back incidents, because if a second ambulance needs to come out, it's coming from North Guilford, um, those are, you know, back-to-back incidents are what, you know, the full four firefighters or two paramedics and two EMTs out of town, uh, and then the turnaround time to the hospitals, if they're going to Yale-Gilford, it's not too bad, but if they're going to New Haven, it's longer times that we're out, uh, down-staffing. But all in all, the response times in general, and the other piece that we look at is the effective response force, so the number of firefighters that we assemble at a structure fire or a structure fire incident, um, and we've, from Safer, we were at twenty percent, um, twenty percent of the level needed, uh, prior to Safer, and we've achieved sixty percent at all of our fires, about thirty-three fires over the course of the time, which is a significant improvement, and that's our, um, our goal was to go from at least twenty percent and hitting that sixty to eighty mark, and we hit the minimum, so we're at sixty percent, and that's assembling fifteen firefighters at a structure fire within the eight minutes that we need to hopefully make a big difference.
Along similar lines, again, not necessarily budget questions, but we have some substantial developments in the works, you know, I think there's like three major residential projects around the books at this point, too. How would that affect the future part?
I think the, the important part.
And the personnel.
It, it's, uh, the biggest piece is to continually, like, monthly at the, at the Commission meetings, we report out and look at the impact that these things have. The same thing with the shift of medical facilities, Yale-Gilford, a lot of the shoreline medical facilities, many of the things have been pushed out to the shoreline, which affect Guilford, Branford, and everywhere else, so the impact on EMS services or fire services or, um, as developments happen, the impact, as we measure and see, uh, you know, each month or each year, report out on those values and see, continue, are, are we meeting the mark for staffing, are we meeting the mark for response times? Uh, we keep a close eye on it, and we don't only look month-to-month, you know, we'll run a six-month or a year report and look over three or five, but the impact has been significant of staffing the North Station, the Safer Grant, um, and the impact to the town in response times and assembling that effect.
Well, I'm just thinking, what do we, we got two, three hundred residential units on the books at this point.
We, uh, we have one, one hundred unit, uh, which is the Hubbard Road, we have two condom, on the south side of Route One, up past Strawberry Hall, and then next to, uh, um, Red Roof Inn, and one of those is forty-eight units, the other's twenty-four, there's twenty-five units going in and down, and State Street, right, uh, and then, um, if, uh, across from Rock pile, if that ever, when they fit, when they finish strip lighting it, so, that'll be a hundred units there.
The minimum of a couple hundred, if not more, residential units, I mean, is there a specific staffing and/or equipment requirement going to be necessary when they come online?
I don't, equipment, no, we're, we're, uh, we, we're at where we need to be, equipment-wise, uh, the, the biggest thing is looking at the impact of calls for service, you know, whether it's fire alarms, carbon dioxide detectors, medicals, anything that we would potentially need to increase response for would, would draw from the system.
Can we have to put a bigger piece of equipment on concept apart from the line, but that'll cover the, is this in Hubbard Road, four stories?
Yeah, yeah, some of the other big, important pieces, too, is, uh, like water supply, uh, working with, uh, you know, most of these things have, they're in hydrant areas, but the projects that are outside of hydrant areas of having an adequate water supply and fire protection plan for those areas that are working, but between the Fire Marshal's Office and everybody working collectively together to make sure that we're future-proofing these projects, uh, pretty, pretty works very well together.
Any questions, uh, from anybody on, uh, online? No, there you go, how about you, any more from here? Thank you very much, well done, good presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are you staying for communications, are you?
Sorry, I don't, I, I stopped him before he closed his book all over.
Or the other.
We already rehearsed this, Matt.
So, go through the communications, um.
The next budget.
Three, four. We'll go through the, uh, we'll go through the account lines, full-time salaries, um, the increase is due to contractual increases, um, part-time salaries has remained the same, uh, no increase there. Overtime, um, overtime is, uh, increased, and one, one contributing factor to that is an additional week of vacation of one employee, he's reached his next year. Um, telephone services, uh, telephone services, uh, one of the biggest driving increases in telephone services, the, was the Everbridge contract, actually, the Everbridge contract, uh, that's the mass notification system that we use, uh, we've been using it more, and we increased our plan of service, and it's been positive outreach, uh, with a lot of information, so that increase.
Are there actual limitations of what we can use that for?
No, well, so there's two sides to that. There's, there's a nine-one-one side, which is state-maintained for the emergency piece, the piece out, push the button, and yes, there are restrictions on that piece, but we also have a subscription service with Everbridge that we've always used for, um, and online on the Town of Guilford website, you can log in and sign up as a user, especially there's a lot of good information that comes, and anytime we have to push something out for closures, neighborhoods, or any information, that's one of our primary points to distribute information to the community, whether it's text, phone call, or email.
But there are, there are no.
No limitations on our subscription. Correct, so we have, we, we use both sides, the emergency side when needed, and also, and I'll give, a good example of that is depending on the number of participants in a database, so, uh, a hurt or a flood or something like that, a lot of times we'll use both systems, 'cause somebody might have registered in the state's E-nine-one-one system, and somebody might have not have registered in the town system, so we take advantage of all of those opportunities to hit the most number of people.
Does your numbers include the town's notifications?
So, there, it's a mix. If somebody registers for the state E-alert system or the nine-one-one, they will be in the state system. Um, if they only registered for the towns, like I wanna be notified when there's, uh, any incident or anything going on, not necessarily specific incident, but road closures, bridge closures, anything that, um, want, that the town wants to put out through there, um, it will be a mixed database, but in emergency situations, we utilize, uh, as many avenues as we can.
For budget reasons, it makes it.
No, 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 budget reasons, that's, that's a separate, this is, this is the, the Everbridge system that we have.
The, the biggest difference between the state, the state one and the town one is that we have accessibility in the nine-one-one database. Okay, so we can call, mess, use their cell phones and everything, everybody. Um, the town system, they have to sign up.
Opt-in, right. And we have, what, uh, nine?
There's a lot. Yeah, the budget, there's a lot of use on it, in this number, or do we have?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a large number of people that, that do use it.
But I think, I think there's some, like, some people in my house, uh, who can get a text and a call and an email.
Ah, yes, but we can call three, it's very effective. You can't miss it.
So, even though we may have ten thousand touchpoints, it's probably more like five thousand distinct. Which still gets you, which still gets you to half the household.
If somebody is getting to three different areas like that and feel overwhelmed, do they have the ability to cancel one or two of it?
Absolutely, yeah, they can change their user.
But that's on them, they have to go in and change their.
Not always, sometimes we get.
We, we help them.
We help them sometimes.
We help some folks, we, well, help them, or whatever, I mean, it's their responsibility to.
It's not automatic, it's not automatic.
So, I'm talking about reducing the, the different ways.
Yeah, but if somebody wants to change. It is, and that's the opt-in piece, so hey, I'm opting in, I want, please send me text messages, and actually, the carriers, the cellphone carriers are getting a lot more restrictive, um, there's federal legislation basically starting to restrict the use of free-flowing texts, um, and, and each, there's, there's a, it's getting tightened up a little bit, but as long as somebody opts in for our services on the town lips.
I think it's great, and, you know, that, that is the only, uh, negative comment I've heard, is that sometimes they get too many, and, you know, my position has been, well, if you opt in, so you get to fix that problem.
Right.
Without everybody understands that.
They can always call, they can always call, and we can always fix it.
Yes, we, we don't offer it as a flat-out service, but we always are willing to help.
It's not going in the newsletter.
That's more on a message.
Exactly.
Okay, I'll keep going, um, the last change is, uh, maintenance contracts, uh, that's, we've noticed increases in, uh, some of the maintenance contracts we have, just like goods and services have gone up, uh, maintenance contracts are also going up to cover their costs. Um, equipment maintenance, office supplies, and education have remained the same.
Any questions?
It's in telephone, like, includes all.
Correct, yeah, that's cellular.
Matt, I have a quick question.
Yep. VOC's in equipment maintenance, right?
Right, yes, Lou.
Um, on the, uh, maintenance contracts going up, is that a function of the equipment getting older and we're paying more for, because the equipment's older, or are new, are new contracts more expensive, 'cause the equipment's fancier and more difficult to maintain, like, which is it?
Yes.
All the above?
All the above, all the above.
And, and we're just, the bottom line is, you pay those contracts, and that means they essentially guarantee quick repair time, and we're, we're, we're assuring, um, uptime of support.
Probably more immediate response, immediate remedy.
And a lot of, believe it or not, a lot of the maintenance contracts today, um, especially if software includes updates for vulnerabilities, for, um, you know, any, any type of software vulnerability in the maintenance contracts includes those companies maintaining the contracts, so that way it's up to the most level of security, just like your Apple iPhone or an Android, is it's, the new version gets released every couple weeks or month, the phones actually update, and that's part of the, the systems and the backbone of the maintenance contracts. Essentially, it's subscription to, as those things change, it's the cost of keeping them up.
Okay, is, where is VOC?
It's under, uh, maintenance contracts.
Let me just talk a little bit about the number of applications that you develop for the use of VOC, which is a municipal software, well, it's actually a government, uh, platform, uh, that I've seen.
Yeah, we're, we're using, and we're using it more and more.
So, the, between the Haven uses VOC as well, some of their reporting stuff, but.
Yeah, it's getting used a lot more in, a lot of different venues, government, uh, higher education, uh, Yale, uh, there's a lot of, uh, so i- in, in the town, though, we have a town ride, that's one of the maintenance pieces that'll increase, but, um, we use it for an array of different things, uh, kind of sometimes down to the food scrap collection program, which isn't even out, but for registration, we use it during COVID, but the biggest piece, uh, day-to-day operations, you know, fire, police, Public Works is, uh, taking off with it right now, um, and even adding Public Works, there's no additional increase, it's part of our enterprise user thing, so, uh, they're starting to create work orders, and I know one of our goals we talked about was like the three-one-one system, where centralized reporting for stuff throughout town, uh, you know, pothole here, I need this service, or a clogged drain, stuff like that, um, Public Works is building up their work order system, but at the same time, the public will have the ability to report online, um, what the situation is, take a picture of it, so for a department head, it's easy to kind of view, oh, I know exactly what drain that is, or what problem that is, um, but it's, uh, we use it for a lot of different functions, uh, down to daily inspections, checks, vehicle checks, damage reporting, uh, a lot of things.
Training.
Training. So, yeah, there's a tracking and training, managing those things, we, there's probably over a hundred, hundred-and-fifty different things that we're, different departments are using it for, so.
Mike's presently working on a payroll one or golf, where moves this per scheduling. He's, he's been working very hard on that, to get that done, which is a very complicated program.
We just have to be careful that VOC doesn't come still.
He's chairman of the board.
Development partner.
Making me work.
Well, it's.
That's good.
It's creating benefits throughout the organization, of course.
Absolutely does.
Anything further on communication? No? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well done, as always. That brings us to the end of the show for today?
Oh.
End of the show. Very efficient.
Oh, thanks, thanks.
I've got, I've got a beat on to call at four, so, you wanna try to cover engineering now?
Did you, did you get my email?
Yes, about the, uh, I have never connected with Pete on that.
I think it's an option, you may wanna look at that, and, because you, you're not even talk offline.
Yes.
You know.
I think we're good.
Okay.
Where do we get to Darlene?
This is good, I like this, learning all kinds of stuff.
Darlene's my successor.
You sure she wants that? Careful what you wish for, Rich.
I'm not wishing for anything of the above.
All right.
So, that would have been Janice, is that what she said?
Yes.
If she's out. I, I didn't download any of her information, but we can look through the lines, and if you have any specific questions.
But her salaries are just contractual, um, there's no, there's no change, no, many major changes there, salaries.
And as you can see, um, her budget, yes, very, uh, the copiers, because we give that information, um, it's, it's slightly up, otherwise she's left, um, her budget intact with the current year.
And I did confirm that, that we are gonna have hazardous waste collection, uh, in April, uh, here in town, you know, that, uh, probably back at Bitner Park again, Laurie Battington, I was.
Yeah, Laurie, yeah.
Laurie, where do they see her, how it costs?
We're doing orange, and equal twenty-second, those still, I didn't.
Those lines, they're in the other place, I need to just.
Well, you don't need, anybody could take them in on any given Saturday from, you know, April to.
No, no, I'm just thinking that they can go to Bitner versus anywhere else. Just get a place, Denny, but.
I think the high school might be an opportunity, but that's in the middle of.
Get off the main dragon, yeah.
And, and, you know, that's in the middle of, starting all the sports. I'm, I'm not sure that's longer than. Yes, it, it's right.
I can't remember when we volunteered a couple of years ago, we, we, it, it only impacted the main road a couple of times, otherwise.
There was, there were.
Right. Yeah, yeah, all the way, all the way in.
You got to loop, but.
Right, it was still all the way.
Still went up seventy-seven a little bit.
It, right, right, but I didn't think it was all that.
I just need to stay.
High school, high school, high school would be the most advantageous place to do it, because you could literally.
You could really curb a ride. Actually, you did it in the summer when there's no. That might be where.
Take a look at for following.
Yeah, that's the police, what they think, if, I don't know, if you have to be in it and have a special event.
There you go, a new special event.
Yeah, it's worthwhile, getting the stuff out of the garages and stuff.
Oh, people were thrilled that day, we, we were there, we were just.
I mean, Haven's okay, but you gotta time it, too.
So, we've only done it once, do you have the list of the, the packs which model?
I do.
Everybody else?
It's everybody else.
I'm just trying to get a sense.
And look at that, I just ran out of battery, look at that, my, my laptop shut down.
CVA?
Any, uh, any comments or questions from, uh, our fellow, uh, warriors on the line?
Good here.
Thank you. If not, we'll reconvene, what are we, at eight-thirty, twenty? Thank you all, thank you. Same station, same bus.